Good evening and welcome to the May 11th, 2015 meeting of the Florissant City Council. I would ask you all to stand and join the council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask the veterans to come forward and lead us. Walter, come on up. Thank you, gentlemen. Before we begin, if you would like to make comment at the hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, I would ask that you fill out a yellow speakers card located on the table next to the entrance of the chamber. If you complete that and hand that to Mr. Hessel, he will forward it to our attention. Item number one, roll call members. Madam Clerk, will you please read the roll?
Syam.
Here.
Lee is absent.
Jones.
Here.
Egan.
Here.
Kuda.
Here.
Childsroth.
Here.
Henke.
Here.
Pagano.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. Item number three, approval of the minutes. Mr. Syam makes a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the executive session and the meeting of April 27, 2015. That is seconded by Mr. Henke. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record reflect, the minutes have been approved. Item number four, proclamation, Your Honor. The mayor will be making a proclamation regarding National Police Week.
Whereas we acknowledge 2015 National Police Week to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Florissant Police Department. Whereas 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, almost 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the light of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved in the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas the names of the fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including 48 officers killed in 2015 to date and 147 officers killed in the previous year. Whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore, I, Thomas P. Schneider, Mayor of the City of Florissant and the City Council, to hereby formally designate May 10 through the 16th, 2015, as National Police Week in the City of Florissant, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation.
I did want to mention also that of the 900,000 officers that are recognized on the police memorial wall, the three officers from the City of Florissant are recognized, Officer Marion Reeve, Lieutenant Jay Nozer, and Officer Glenn Fournau, who paid, all three paid the ultimate sacrifice really protecting the City of Florissant. So I would do, want to make sure we do mention all three of those officers. And we also have a memorial that's in the lobby of the Florissant Police Department that also honors their service to our community. But thank you very much for everything.
All right, next item on the agenda will be proclamations, and the chief and mayor will just stand right there.
First commendation goes to Officer Jonathan Kemp. On January 3rd, 2015, Officer Jonathan Kemp received information from a confidential informant that an illegal drug transaction was going to occur at the Flower Valley Shopping Center. Taking an inconspicuous point of observation, Officer Kemp was able to corroborate with the informant's information. Based on the information and corroboration, he has, he was able to arrest the suspect for possession, manufacture, and sale of narcotics. As Officer Kemp's investigation continued, he obtained a consent to search the suspect's residence where he located cash, numerous items to facilitate distribution of illegal drugs, and a large quantity of heroin because of Officer Kemp's initiative, dedication, diligence, law enforcement efforts. A dangerous drug dealer is off the streets of Florissant. For his excellent police work, he is to be officially commended.[465.02][465.02](Applause). The next commendation goes to Officer Tyler Italiano. On January 6th, 2015, Officer Tyler Italiano responded to a call of burglary first degree in the 700 block of Northmore. Officer Italiano's interview with, of the victim revealed that, revealed that she discovered two suspects had forced open the rear door of her residence. When the suspects realized the residence was home, they fled. After Officer Italiano obtained all of the information for the report, he was able to contact an informant that identified one of the suspects. Following up on that information, Officer Italiano proceeded to the address in the City of Florissant, Ferguson. Officer Italiano was able to locate and arrest two suspects that matched the physical clothing descriptions supplied by the victim. Both suspects were later positively identified in a photo lineup by the victim. Because of Officer Italiano's diligent professional efforts, a serious crime was solved and two burglaries were officially charged with, burglars were officially charged with burglary first degree. For his excellent police work, he is to be officially commended.[541.91][541.91](Applause). Officer Eric Schluter and Officer Mike Kiefer. On January 19th, 2015, Officer Eric Schluter and Officer Mike Kiefer responded to a call of man choking at the 54th Street Bar and Grill. When the officers arrived, they discovered an unresponsive elderly male. The officers immediately employed an attempt to clear his airway with abdominal thrusts. When this failed, both officers initiated CPR and continued this until the paramedics arrived. The patient was then transported to the nearby hospital where he was admitted. Paramedic Zach Crado notified our department that without the Officer Schluter's and Officer Kiefer's life-saving efforts, the 85-year-old man would not have survived. Both officers are to be officially commended for their life-saving actions.[598.54][598.54](Applause). Officer Brian Law. On January 26th, 2015, Officer Brian Law responded to a call of shots fired in the 300 block of Dunn Road. When he arrived, he detained the subject that appeared extremely nervous. Based on his law enforcement experience and training, continued investigating the suspect even though the call of shots fired was baseless. Officer Law was able to obtain the consent to search his vehicle where he located a nine-millimeter gun that had been reported as stolen from the Jefferson County Police Department. A record check also revealed that the subject was considered a violent felon because of the prior federal charges. Officer Law arrested the suspect. He continued to interview him at the station. There, he was able to determine that he had other firearms stashed in his address in the City of St. Louis. Based on the information, Officer Law partnered with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives and the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department. Officer Law was later able to recover three more firearms and over 100 grams of raw heroin in the City of St. Louis. Officer Law's diligent patrol investigative techniques and observations resulted in taking a violent, taking violent narcotics dealer off the streets of Florissant. St. Louis County Officer Miss Ellie and K-9 Partner. On January 28th, 2015, Officer Nicholas Osmer of the Florissant Police Department came upon a disturbance where the suspect was armed with a handgun. Two armed and dangerous suspects fled the scene in a stolen vehicle, and Officer Osmer pursued them to the 10,000 block of New House Ferry where the suspects fled on foot. Because of the fact that Officer Miss Ellie and his K-9 partner arrived within seconds of this foot pursuit, he was able to track, locate, and arrest the second suspect. Warrants were issued against these suspects for unlawful use of a weapon and assault second degree, tampering, and resisting arrest. Officer Miss Ellie's quick response and his K-9 skill resulted in the removal of a dangerous suspect from the streets of St. Louis County. Your excellent police work is hereby officially commended.[762.57][762.57](Applause). Officer Steve Beekman, Officer Amel Tepajik, and Officer Ed Eric Schluter. On February 28th, 2015, Officer Steve Beekman, Officer Amel Tepajik, and Officer Eric Schluter responded to a call of a house fire in the 2300 block of Birchview. While the officers were en route to the scene, the dispatcher notified the officers that the wife of the resident had notified them that the fire had been initiated by her husband and that he intended to kill himself. When the officers arrived, they received information that the resident was locked in the rear master bedroom. Efforts to call the resident out met with no response. Upon the arrival of the fire personnel, firefighters entered the residence to the address, residence to address the fire and to attempt to gain entry into the locked bedroom. Upon hearing a shot, Officer Beekman entered the residence to warn the fire personnel. Hearing no further shots and needing to take quick action, Officer Beekman, Officer Tepajik, and Officer Schluter gained access to the bedroom where they found the resident sitting on the bed. The officers then grabbed the subject and forced him outside where they were able to retain him, restrain him. He was transported to a local hospital where he was admitted for psychiatric evaluation. A .25 caliber handgun was recovered from the bedroom. The officers' heroic efforts of entering a burning building and taking person intent on killing himself safely to custody was certainly evidence of their professional dedication. Their heroic actions are hereby officially commended.[860.85][860.85](Applause). Officer Mark Nardoni and Officer Brian Bussen. On March 9th, 2015, Officer Mark Nardoni and Officer Brian Bussen received information that the suspect was in possession of a stolen firearms. With this information, both Officer Nardoni and Officer Bussen were able to locate the suspect and obtain consent to search residence at 600 block of Baltic in the City of Florissant. The search resulted in the location of not only a nine-millimeter handgun reported stolen to the St. Louis County Police, but also a large quantity of illegal drugs. Because these officers' efforts, because of these officers' efforts, the suspect was arrested for weapons and drug charges. The suspect was also arrested for other, for other agencies that had charges pending for felony possession of drugs and statutory rape. Due to both officers' diligent investigative techniques and observations, a dangerous narcotics dealer was taken off the streets of Florissant.[926.01][926.01](Applause). Officer Shonta Williams. On March 18th, 2015, Officer Shonta Williams heard a call of an armed robbery in the 2700 block of North Highway 67. When Officer Williams responded to the area to search for suspect, she was able to locate a witness who directed her attention to a suspicious vehicle that was parked in the residential area. The suspect had entered the vehicle, and Officer Williams gave chase to the fleeing vehicle. The suspect vehicle became disabled after a collision, and the suspect was subsequently apprehended. Warrants were obtained for the suspect on robbery charge, and follow-up investigation revealed the suspect was linked to several other robberies in the St. Louis County area.
Item number six, hearing from citizens. If you would like to make comment to the council and have not done so yet, I would ask that you obtain a yellow speakers card located on the table next to entrance to the chamber, complete set, and hand it to Mr. Hessel, who will forward it to our attention. Mr. Robert Roger Dubach. Mr. Dubach, if you'll state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it. If you also take the microphone and speak very loud into it, would it be helpful, sir?
All right, thank you. Good evening, members of city council. My name is Roger Dubach, PO Box 27, Florissant, Missouri. I am Roger Dubach, President of Vietnam Veterans of America, Chapter 794 Florissant. I'm here tonight to respectfully request that this service to America plaque, that my fellow Vietnam veterans, Chapter 794 members, full sport, to be placed upon the Vietnam Veterans Monument at Coke Park. This plaque represents those fallen Vietnam veterans and their sacrifice made by them in service to America. You have before you a packet of information with a resolution in support of permanently affixing this memorial plaque upon this monument located in Coke Park. A picture of this monument is enclosed for your review. Also, you have a picture of the In Service to America placket to see this bronze memorial that is being presented to the City of Florissant this 11th day of May 2015. I would appreciate the passage of this resolution in support of the Vietnam-era veterans, member of my, members of my VVA, Chapter 79, 794, presented to symbolize their dedication to this resolution presented to you this evening. Thank you for your time. And here's the plaque.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening, Ms. Whitener. If you will state your name and address for the record, I'd be appreciative. And again, if you'll talk very loud into the hand mic, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Rebecca Whitener, 742 Locies. And again, you see my familiar face, I'm here again in regard to the pit bull ordinance. I am still trying to find places to foster my puppy. She's the 14th of this month, she'll be 15 months. We have two more sessions to go through the citizenship K-9 awards, and she's so far acing them like she did her puppy classes. And I have sent emails to every one of the council people. I didn't send one to Karen or to Mr. Hessel, mainly because you guys are the ones that start the ordinance and everything like that. I don't know what else to say except my puppy, everybody loves her. Kids in the neighborhood come and visit with her, I take her for rides and all of this type of stuff. And Tim has met her several times and several puppy kisses. And she's, she's just lovable, and I don't know what I'd do without her. I've had her since she was two months old. Please consider amending or taking off the books or whatever you can of the pit bull because there's, well, even the Missoura Congress is in the process now of going through and working on, I don't, I haven't been able to find the exact wording, but to all of the communities in the State of Missoura will be illegal for having this ordinance against any breed-specific dog. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Bill Kiefer. Good evening, Mr. Kiefer. If you'll state your name and address for the record, and again, speak loudly into the mic, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vietnam veteran, welcome home. To members of the council, I don't live in Florissant, but I have a real estate agent looking for me a place in Florissant at this time. My son and his wife live here with my 20-year-old grandson, excuse me, yeah, no, 10-month-old grandson, so I'm looking to move into Florissant as soon as possible. I was here last year, you were kind enough to let me speak then. Once again, we have the Cardinal baseball game. This is the opportunity for veterans, their family, friends, anybody in Florissant, policemen, firemen, everyone to take advantage of a Cardinal ballgame. There are $55 seats, and you can get them for $20. Had the opportunity to sit with our mayor last year at the event, and I have some copies over there for you. Just want to make you aware that I'll be sending something in an email that can be forwarded to you, and you could forward to the other folks. But we have very good seats, lower level, you know, no upper deck, very good, and we're playing the part, so it should be a good game. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kiefer. I know that I went last year and had a really good time, it was a lot of fun to see everybody.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item number seven, communications, and I see none. Item number eight, public hearings. We will reopen public hearing 1504-008. Is Mr. Brian Lamar present? Sir, if you'll be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record, I'd appreciate it. And this is regarding the Sunrise Restaurant request to update the Denny's up in, up on Lindbergh?
Yes, it is. I'm not, I'm Brian Lamar, but he's no longer with us. Last two weeks ago, another employee from him had come up and he didn't tell you guys he was here. So I'm actually from the architectural firm that did the drawings and did the renderings for the, for them. So I came here to go over the special use.
Very good. Will you state your name and address for the record, sir?
Yes, it's Michael Richardson. I'm with Hanna Design Group. We're a firm out of Schaumburg, Illinois.
And in the address?
Oh, it's 650 East Algonquin Road, Schaumburg, Illinois.
Very good. If you'll go ahead and proceed with your presentation, sir.
Okay, I think most of you have, I think you have the renderings. I think you have them. Also, I think I sent, I did send the four elevations as well, so I don't know exactly what you have. But the rendering, this is, this would be the front of the building, which faces North Highway 67. Now, this stone is only going to be on the front, a little bit on both sides, not on the back or the side, just really the front of the building. And they also are going to do different painting.
Sir, sir, could you pull that microphone out so we can hear you? Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so this is, they're going to also do a new painting on this, so it'll be the facade, the roof that's there that's right now, it's like a brown color, if you want to call it brown. And then they're also going to keep, put the new stone, which is, this is a faux stone, which I do have a sample of, so I don't know if I can pass it around. This is, this is just a sample. It's not too, and it is a concrete-based material. And there's another Denny's, it's in Collinsville, that's the sister to this, and they've just now completed their renovation, and this is what the front looked like. That's that same stone product on the facade, and also the same colors that are in the rendering on the front are the same colors on the roof and the cope capping and all that. This is, actually was done, finished today. It only took them two weeks to do the renovation for the exterior, and they did some interior work as well. I've got a close-up picture, too, so I can kind of get, it's the same, it's the same what you're seeing. And one more, the other rendering that I did send you guys was the back, just to show that the color continues around, but the stone does not. I was also at, I was here also to ask to, I think you have, I think it's two, two or three readings you have to do into the three. I'm also, I'm also asking to see if you guys will allow us to do the three readings in tonight, because what they want to do is they want to start this, the eighteenth. It'd be done in two weeks, actually ten days. If we don't do that on the eighteenth, get the special use tonight, pull it and start the product, or starting the project next Monday, they'll push off till about August, to September, to redo this facade. And that's because of the general contractor that they've hired. He's got other stuff that he's working on, so it's going to actually push it back three to four months.
Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I don't, if you have this on your plans that you were shown, I know the front's going to be, make the facade of what that, that fox stone.
Yes.
The sides of the building. As of this time, it's kind of that, like that mustard color, yellow, brownish color. It's a painted, painted masonry. Okay, now, on the plans, it says you're going to paint it again, right?
On the back and the sides.
The back and the sides. Okay, that's my problem. We have an ordinance with painting brick and masonry on block in this city, and it's getting to the point now where everybody's painting everything and block, masonry, and it's, it's got to stop somewhere. I know you have paint on there right now, and you're going to paint it again. You're going with a lighter color that's on the paint now, and I don't know who your painting contractor is or what kind of process you're going to do on that painting. If you're going to sandblast it all off, go down to the block itself and repaint it, I don't know. But that's my only problem that I have. It did look nice, but I have the problem with painting the masonry. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, what color is the grout going to be that's going to go in between your fake brick stones?
It's going to be, it's going to be a light gray, so it makes the stone pop.
Will there be any interior renovations done as you did in the, the one in Granite City?
Yes, yes, there's interior work that we will be doing, basically just in the dining area, new tables, new chairs. We're actually doing new acoustical ceiling, new lighting, new flooring, new partial height walls, new seating, booth seating, all of that's going to be redone.
Okay, thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience, excuse me, Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. I'm sorry, ringing a little bit late. Mr. Hassel, I'm looking through the ordinance for this particular restaurant, and I don't see anything that makes mention of them changing the color on the paint, on the masonry, which by, required by our new ordinances that we've imposed, they need permission to do that. Well, it's not addressed in the ordinance that I can see.
The only thing I can see, Mark, is in section one, it references that the exterior renovations for the property located at 2925 North Highway 67, according to the proposed, prepared, proposal prepared by the petitioner as described in related documents presented and accorded, and according to the attached drawings. I don't know whether or not those documents and the attached drawings would in fact authorize them to engage in the painting. Obviously, Phil Lum and his staff would have looked at that much more carefully than I would have. So that's the only thing that I see that possibly could do it.
I know.
Otherwise, I'm like you, I don't find anything in here that authorizes them to engage in the painting of the brick.
Yeah, I think there's going to have to be an amendment made to that or a substitute bill, because the way the ordinance was reading was if they don't change colors, they can do it by permit from building commissioner.
Correct.
However, if they change the color, they need the permission of this council.
Your memory is the same as mine, but I better check the ordinance to be sure our memories are correct.
And that's why, when he said he was changing colors, I went right to the, and didn't find it in there, so.
And I guess just to be, if I may, just to be safe one way or another, if the council wants to grant that kind of permission, it should do so by amending the ordinance so it's abundantly clear. Similarly, if the council is not inclined to grant that, I would likewise like to have that stated in the ordinance, again, that sort of presupposes whether or not the council wants to engage in three readings this evening. Otherwise, we can address it at the second reading.
Yeah, I, for one, I don't think I'm ready to do three readings tonight, but, because I'd also like a colored chip of that color so we can make that a part of the record so that in the future, should they decide to paint it again, we'll have a record of what color it is and presently, so, yeah.
Obviously, I do not disagree with what you're saying, and we, I'm a big proponent of making it abundantly clear for the future.
No, I follow.
Yeah, we have our ordinances on the book that are about masonry painting, and it's, if it's an existing building that has been painted and has been either grandfathered in or under our ordinances, as long as you don't change the color, you can get permission to paint that same color from the billing commissioner. However, if you change colors on a masonry, you have to get permission from this board in order to do that.
Yeah.
And like I said, I don't see this, it's not in the ordinance written that way, so...
Phil had told me if I paint it, if it's painted, I can paint it again. He didn't say, I'd get it approved to get a color paint. Didn't say that.
The change of color, you have to get it approved by this body.
And I'm not going to go with this and have yellow or orange or whatever color you want to call it.
Yeah. If it changes colors, you have to get approved from this body.
And I had submitted, I had submitted paint samples, but I can't see anything. No.
We'll get that straightened out. That's all I have.
Thank you, and I would also concur, I would be very wary about doing three readings, especially in light of this, this paint controversy. It's one of the reasons why it's very difficult to do a public hearing and three readings the same night. Before we finish this, we close this public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment?
Mr. President, if I may also, the application process did identify, it was signed by Paul Tanner with Sunrise Restaurants LLC, and he identified Brian Lamar as the authorized agent. Obviously, Mr. Lamar is not here. So if you could ask Paul Tanner of Sunrise Restaurants LLC to send something to the city clerk identifying that you're authorized to speak on behalf of them, that would be very helpful.
Seeing no person's willing to make comment or wanting to make comment, Mr. Schmidt motions to close this public hearing. That is seconded by Mr. Jones. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the public hearing is closed.
Will there be a reading tonight still, or?
Yes, sir, we'll do, we'll do a first reading this evening, and then we'll have everything straightened out ideally by the next meeting.
Thank you.
Public hearing 1505-011.
In accordance with section 405-310 of the Florissant zoning code, a public hearing will be held by the city council of Florissant, Missouri, in the council chambers at 9:55 Rousseigne-François on Monday, May 11, 2015, at 7:30 PM on the following proposition: To authorize an amendment to special use permit number 4879 as amended by ordinance numbers 5969 and 7264 to allow for the expansion of a nursing home in a B4 zoning district with a property located at 1501 Charbonneir Road. Citizens will have an opportunity to be heard and anyone in special needs to contact the city clerk at least five days before a public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you'll state your name and your address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members, Mr. Mayor, and members of the board, my name is John King. I'm an attorney. My offices are in Clayton, 7701 Forsyth, Suite 500. I'm here this evening representing the Bentwood Nursing and Rehab Center, which is located over on Charbonneir Road here in the city of Florissant. The petitioner, which is the Bentwood nursing people, are the petitioners who filed this petition to amend the CUP and also the owners of the nursing home itself. With me this evening is Mike Woodard, who is the administrator of the nursing home. His son is now the owner of that nursing home. Sally Barnett from Bentwood, she is the director of business development. Also, John Dunkett, who is the representative for Bentwood for the construction work that is proposed. Ryan Swischguth, who is the civil engineer with Cochran Engineering. He can answer any questions you may have on the civil engineering. And Steve Filer, who is from FSA Architectural Firm, and he is here to answer any questions on the architectural work. This piece property, which is shown here on the screen outlined in yellow, is the, located at 1501 Charbonneir. They have been in business since approximately 1989 at this location. The property itself is presently zoned R4 with a special use permit for a nursing home. Presently, at the existing nursing home, there are 76 beds. We are asking permission from the city to add an additional 13,000-plus square feet and have an additional 20 beds, so we'd have a total of 96 beds at this location. This is a copy of the site plan as we proposed today. This is the existing facility right here where the 76 beds are presently located. This will be the new facility, the new 13,000 square feet, where we will add an additional 20 beds. We will also be adding, and that, by the way, that building will be the same as the other building, one story in height, and will match it in the way of the architectural design and the materials used. The, we will add also 20 new parking places, which will give us a sufficient amount of parking, a total of 63 spaces on the site. So we're adding 20 spaces for the new units, and we have an existing 43, so we'll have a total of 63 spaces at this location. The size of the tract, the total size of the tract, once it's zoned, will be 7.5 acres in size. They bought the property, the lots, on either end of the site, on the east end and the west end of the site. Originally, the lot size was 4.08 acres. They've added 3.4 acres, excuse me. Originally, the site was 4.88 acres. They have added 3.4 acres. The property on the east is 1.85 acres. The property on the west is 1.6. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them. I will give you a copy of the elevations of the new building. So if you have any questions, you're more than happy, we're more than happy to try to answer them for you.
Mr. Jones?
I don't have too many questions. I was up there and did a hands-on with him this morning with Mike, which is a great neighbor to have in Ward Two, you guys. The place is immaculate every time I've ever been out there, inside and out. I think it's one of our top-of-the-line retirement home rehabs in the city of Florissant. I'm glad they're expanding, and we couldn't pick a better person or place to do it at is right in Ward Two. Thanks.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you. Hi, John, nice to see you again. Doesn't the state require licensing for more beds? Don't you have, don't you have to apply to the state to get?
Yes, we received.
Because I know when you came back, when you were here a few years back and you added, I don't know, was it four beds or eight beds?
Eight beds, eight beds, yes.
That was, that was kind of the hang-up at that point in time. It took you a little bit to get that straightened out.
Yes. We received, last Monday, week of the day in Jefferson City, we received our certificate of need for 20 additional beds. So that's done, yes.
Perfect. That's all, that's all I have. Thank you.
I just want to say to Councilman Jones, thank you very much for stopping by today and visiting with me, allowing me to show you the layout and the site. I appreciate that very much.
The additional 20 beds, how many more staff members will that entail? Do you have an estimate on that, sir?
Well, the core staff is there. We will be adding additional nurses on each shift. We're building a new therapy gym in this, so therapy will move from one side to the other side. We will be adding another nurse on the day shift, two more CNAs on the day shift, additional dietary staff, and on the evening shift, it will be basically the same. Will be another, another nurse, two to three more nurses aides, nurses assistants, and additional dietary again on the evening shift. Night shift will be basically one nurse and two CNAs, certified nurses aides on that shift.
Okay, thank you. The, I know that the, that is, the building's going to be the east end of the property, the new building? Will be on the east end of the property, is that correct?
Yes, yes, it is.
And it should not have too much of a negative impact on the traffic on Charbonneir? That's further away from the stop sign than the, obviously, the west end?
You want to address that? Let me have John address that, please.
Hi, my name's John Dunnett, Jam Construction Solutions. I'm owner's rep on the project for the Woodards. We spent a lot of time figuring out which side to go to, and the east side, I think everyone we talked to thought that would be the best. And we do have all of our preliminary discussions in with county MSD, so this is with all of their feedback. You know, we still have to go a little bit deeper through the process with them after this approval.
All right, that's all I have. Your honor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I've known Mr. Woodard in Bentwood for many, many years. They're good at what they do, according to the residents that I have known over the years that have stayed there. And they've been model business citizens in the community. So just a lot, thanks for doing what you do, and thanks for being a good business citizen.
Thank you. Before we close this public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, Mr., step forward, ma'am. Ma'am, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and your address for the record, and if you'll speak loudly into the hand mic, I'd appreciate it.
My name's Mary Bushung. My address is 1030 Locies Drive. My backyard backs up to the My backyard backs up to the side of Bentwood Nursing Home, where they plan on adding on. My question is, are they going to have another entrance/exit driveway? Are they, I'm trying to figure out how, I mean, when I look out my backyard, the stake is right there along that wall. I am that close to the addition that you're requesting. And I just had a few questions as to what are your plans, where the driveway's going to be, or if there's going to be another entrance/exit, if you could address that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
So with our initial feedback, we at first were thinking the farther away from the stop sign, the better. This site plan is actually, St. Louis County just gave us some feedback that they'd like the road to line up here. So I think the entrance is going to actually, once we go through all our approvals with the county, be pushed down a little bit. So the entrance will come in here. MSD has requirements for retention in the front, so there will be a landscape barrier there. And then along this property line, there's also landscaping.
You are in charge here of one house, which you call...
The house, the house is right here, so yes, that is, that will come down. Correct.
Thank you. Prior to closing this public hearing, excuse me, Mr. Jones.
Well, I just wanted to make a statement when I went over today. It's one of the questions I did ask about the new parking, how many spaces there would be. Would it be facing Lindsey Lane, or would it be facing the house that your house backs up to, ma'am, which I know where you live, next to the creek. I seen you the other day. But I made sure that there wasn't going to be no parking coming in on your guys with lights or anything like that. I just went through that with the fitness center and made sure that was all correct. It said none of the car lights that come to the fitness center will be coming back on any of those houses. So that's one thing that I did look for when I did go over here today, to make sure there wasn't a parking spot coming back on those houses.
Is there anyone else that would like to make comment on this public hearing before we close it? Seeing none, Mr. Jones moves to close the public hearing, as seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the public hearing is closed. Item number nine, old business. Second reading. Bill number 9091. Ms. Pagano makes a motion for a second reading. That is seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for the second time.
Request to authorize a special use permit to Johnny Landoff Chevrolet to allow for auto repair facility for the property located at 4580 Washington.
Ms. Pagano makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Kaputa. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill for the third time.
An ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Johnny Landoff Chevrolet to allow for an auto repair facility for the property located at 4580 Washington.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee Zabson Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9091 passes and becomes ordinance 8136, 8136. Bill 9092. Mr. Syam makes a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ma'am, please read the bill for the second time.
Ordinance to amend special use permit number 7871 for New York Grill Corporation DBA New York Grill to allow for renovations for the property located at 41 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Mr. Syam makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Hanky. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 7871 for New York Grill Corporation DBA New York Grill to allow for the renovations for the property located at 41 Flower Valley Shopping Center.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Syam?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9092 passes and becomes ordinance 8137, 8137. New business. Board appointments. Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to appoint Carl Ranigal to the Emergency Management Commission.
I'll make that motion, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The appointment is made.
I'd like to appoint Roger Corando to the Senior Commission.
Mr. Kaputa makes that motion, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye.
I'd like to appoint Kimberly Redden to, for Ward 9, member of the Traffic Commission.
Mr. Hanky makes that motion, seconded by Mr. Syam. Any, all in favor? Aye. And the appointment is made.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple more vacancies on the Traffic Commission we need to fill. We've been having difficulty with quorum on that committee. So I appreciate help from those of you that have, I believe yours is going to resign, Mr. Jones, and we need one from you, Joe. I think there's, is that it? We might need one more.
Thank you very much. Bills for first reading. Bill number 9086.
Ordinance authorizing a special use permit to Sunrise Restaurants LLC DBA Denny's Restaurants for law for the existing sick-down carryout restaurant for the exterior renovations for property located at 2925 North Highway 67.
Bill number 9093.
Ordinance authorizing amendment to special use permit number 4879 as amended to allow for the expansion of a nursing home in B4 district for the property located at 1501 Charbonneere Road.
Bill 9094.
Ordinance amending general fund budget to reflect $29,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to the forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of patrol motorcycles for the police department.
Mr. Shildroff makes a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by myself. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill the second time.
Ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $29,000 from asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of patrol motorcycles for the police department.
Mr. Shildroff makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by myself. Mr. Shildroff?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be supporting three readings tonight, on the condition that former Chiefs Lowry and Caribus do a public service announcement supporting this ordinance, and they have to be dressed in chaps and everything like that, so that's what I want to say.
You already know how to answer that, don't you?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk, please poll the council for the third reading.
Syam?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill a third time.
Ordinance amending the general fund budget to reflect $29,000 from the asset forfeiture funds in escrow to forfeiture revenue account 01434511 and to forfeiture expenditure account 0154961000 for the purchase of patrol motorcycles for the police department.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Syam?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill 9094 passes and becomes ordinance 8138, 8138. Your Honor?
I'd like to thank the council for passing this tonight. The chief and I feel like this will add a needed element to our police department. It will allow us to patrol places that we might not have been able to patrol very easily with a car. It'll also allow our police officers to interact with the youth of our community in a very welcome way, so we really are looking forward to having the motorcycle units out there interacting with our citizens. Thanks.
Thank you. Bill 9095.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $30,000 from the Capital Improvement Fund to account number 0350 Professional Services to complete the design for the St. Anthony Lane Bridge replacement, and $24,000 to account number 0340330 Grants and Reimbursements to reflect grant reimbursement.
Item number 11. Ms. Pagano makes a motion to move the meeting of May 25 to May 26 due to the Memorial Day holiday, as seconded by Mr. Shildroff. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The next meeting will be May 26. Item number 12, council announcements. Mr. Jones.
Okay, I'd like to start out with, it's turning a little bit warmer outside, so if everybody could please watch their dogs in the neighborhood. We don't want to leave them out too long. You guys, they get a little bit hotter than humans do, so we need to keep an eye on our dogs. Another thing, I've had quite a few phone calls about the creek job that MSD has performed. They're coming back to do a small section of the people that's calling. They're coming back in about a week or so, so we did not forget about you. You guys will be taken care of. And if anybody could please step outside their door once in a while and make sure their streetlights are working, I would appreciate it. There's a lot of streetlights out there that haven't worked in some time, and they're used to not seeing that glow out there, which is a big safety thing, to have those streetlights working. So if everybody could take a peek out there, make sure their streetlights are working, I would appreciate it. If they are not, please call, and I will jump right on that. Another thing I'd like to say, which I don't never want to forget, is please stop just for a minute, grab a couple canned goods, and run them down to Team. There's lots of fortunate people in the city of Florissant. We need to reach out when other people ain't so fortunate, and take a little bit of your time and a couple dollars' worth of canned goods and run them down there. It always makes you feel good after you do something good for the neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kaputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to congratulate all the police officers tonight that were, that had got their accommodations and the St. Louis County Police Officer. That's a good award. It's just to show what kind of police department we have in this city. Very, very professional, very courteous, and very serious when it does come to crime. So all you criminals out there, take it here to that, and we will be watching you. Another thing, it's that time of year for grass. Make sure all of our citizens keep up on our grass cutting. I know this time of year, it's like you cut it one time and overnight it grows. So just be courteous of it and make sure you get your grass cut. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaputa. Mr. Hanky?
Yes, good evening. I want to thank all the letter carriers in the city of Florissant. Just this past Saturday was a national food drive that the letter carriers put on once a year. It's one of the largest food drives that's nationwide. Once again, excellent turnout, the letter carriers and all the food from the whole Florissant postal delivery area, all the food collected goes to Team, the food bank Team. So all that food locally stays here. They did an outstanding job, but I also want to thank all the citizens that donated to the food drive. Also, the Valley of Flowers cleanup, I want to commend the city and the citizens. The Valley of Flowers was a beautiful, beautiful weekend, nice event, everything trouble-free, I would like to say. But also, I was very impressed at the end of the day, after the parade, after the Valley of Flowers was over, within a couple days, everything was completely back to normal, cleaned up. Kudos to the city and kudos to the citizens for taking care of it also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanky. I want to echo what Mr. Kaputa said about our police officers. If you listen to those seven or eight stories, that could probably fill a TV series for an entire year. There were so many diverse actions and heroic actions that these officers took, and they do that every day for us. And so I want to echo that. May 20, May 15 is a very special day to all of us who are police officers. And I would ask that you say a little prayer on the 15 for those who haven't made a home, and we've lost, I believe, four this week, four so far this week, and a total of 42 this year. Forty-two officers have been killed in line of duty this year. Secondly, I want to echo what Mr. Hanky said, the Valley of Flowers was a great time this year. I believe that Mr. Syam was in charge of the weather his first time. He did very, very good. The parade came off awesome. There were some points in the parade that there were five and six people deep, and kudos to everyone, the police department, Public Works, the street department parks, and the committee that all pitched in to make this a wonderful event.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your service in the police department. I have an apology to make to Mr. Syam. On the Valley of Flowers weekend, anybody that would listen, I took credit for the weather, even though it was Mr. Syam's responsibility, but you did a great job. The Valley of Flowers, like they say down at Rolla for every St. Pats, no matter what the weather is down there, they always say that every St. Pats is the best ever. But I believe that this Valley of Flowers was one of the best ever. It was very, very well attended. The changes to the rules down at the Knights Grounds that we put in three years ago have proven to be very wise ones, and the chief and I could not have been more pleased at the result. If you looked at the crowd that was there all weekend, it was every size, shape, every different, there were people from, ancestors came from every different continent on the world, and everybody got along very well. And not only at the Knights Grounds, but at the Egan Center, and we had five performances open to the public of the Zoop Family Circus. That was immensely enjoyed by all, plus the sideshows. We had tremendous sideshows and the, all the activities under the ice rink with the craft fairs and the plant sales by the garden club. We couldn't have been happier. The parade, everything was just a big hit, and I appreciate everybody, including the Valley of Flowers Committee, who spent a lot of time to make that a success. I would, I'd like to thank Senator Emeritus Tim Green. He's been working very, very hard for us. He's our lobbyist in Jefferson City, and there's a lot of threats to municipalities, not just to Florissant. And we're very fortunate to have him up there to monitor the things that are very, could be very detrimental to Florissant. I also would like to thank Senator Walsh and Nadal. They were, they had to resort to a filibuster to stop the city of Chesterfield from trying to railroad the sales tax money from the rest of the county. And Senator, our senators did a great heroic job, and they got that laid aside. They're still fighting it this week. We're going to hold our breath until they close the session on Friday. We're also a little disappointed that they decided to treat the cities in St. Louis County differently than the rest of the state when it comes to court revenue. What I felt like they needed to do was come up with the rules that would affect everybody the same, but for some reason, they have different rules for the rest of the state than they do for St. Louis County. We have a problem with that. And then, you know, it's always with some political risk that you advocate any kind of fee increase, but it's absolutely essential that the state legislature, and I'll be quoted on this, we need to raise the gas tax two cents, two pennies, right now, or we will definitely, for sure, lose $230 million of federal matching money. That's our dollars that we paid in our income tax to the federal government, that instead of coming to Missouri is going to go to Kansas, or Mississippi, or Nebraska. of coming to Missouri is going to go to Kansas, or Mississippi, or Nebraska, or some other state. But it's not going to come to Missouri unless they raise the gas tax two cents. Missouri has one of the lowest, if not the lowest, gas tax in the country. And we've been shouting it out. We had a news conference at the Florissant Road overpass for two-seventy over Florissant Road a couple weeks ago. We got a little bit of news coverage on that. So, I'm shouting out again, anybody that's willing to listen, get the word up to Jefferson City. Most of us won't even stoop over and pick up a couple pennies on the sidewalk. The legislature needs to put the state ahead of their party and ahead of their dogma up there and do the right thing so that we don't lose the federal matching money. Anyway, back to Florissant. There's all kinds of registration for activities at the aquatic centers and at the civic centers. We have outdoor aquatic programs starting. You need to check in with the Egan Center or the JFK Center to find out what kind of aquatic programs you might benefit from. And then, we have lots of other programs, Zumba, preschool lessons, swimming lessons, all kinds of aqua activity that people can sign up for, for all different ages. And then, outside of the water, we got body toning and judo and yoga and sculpting and all kinds of other good stuff for children and for seniors, all kinds of stuff to keep fit. So, Florissant residents have no excuse for not staying fit. We have a program for every age and every body size. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be Tuesday, May twenty-sixth, 2015, at seven-thirty PM. Mr. Jones makes a motion to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Mr. Kaputa. All in favor? Aye. The council stands adjourned.